We're ready to start. I could get a motion that we only discuss those items we went into closed session for three items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one A one, appointments to town manager, town attorney, and boards and committees.
Mr. Mayor, I might note that it should be three seven one one A, not three seven one. But with that, that slight, very small edit, so moved.
And may I have a roll call for that?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, first we'll have the pledge of allegiance that'll be led by Councilman Ratcliff, and then invocation by Councilman East.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your head at this time. Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we thank you for your continued grace and mercy. We ask for wisdom and guidance in all matters, and for your continued presence in our community. In your name we pray, amen.
All right, first off, I'd like to start by welcoming our guests that are here and online. Thank you for being here. And modifications to public session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we modify the agenda to add the approval of the employment contract of a new town manager. I'm not sure where that's best suited to go, perhaps after the ordinance and resolutions? But before public comment?
Okay.
Fourteen, so new number fourteen. So that's a motion.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And we, Mr. Mayor, we have one other addition to the agenda. It'll be Resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixty, our resolution appointment candidates to the New River Valley Agency on Agency Aging Board of Directors. Make a motion to add that to the agenda as well.
We'll put that right after, we'll put that right under the contract then, okay? All right.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
So my first thing is Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski proclamation. All right, whereas Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski is a landmark hospital in the community, and since nineteen seventy-three has served the area from its current location with one hundred and forty-seven licensed beds and an expansive range of inpatient and outpatient medical, surgical, and emergency care services. And whereas Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski's community roots run deep, in nineteen fifteen, the General Chemical Company founded the Pulaski Hospital Association to operate a seven-bed cottage hospital. In nineteen twenty-six, Dr. D. S. Diver, Dr. R. F. Thornhill, Dr. R. H. Wooling, and Dr. H. R. Farling founded Pulaski Hospital Incorporated, and built Pulaski General Hospital on Randolph Avenue downtown Pulaski. Finally, in nineteen seventy-three, a new three-million-dollar state-of-the-art hospital was built on a twenty-three-acre site inside Pulaski's northern corporate limits off Route eleven. And whereas Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski has won numerous prestigious awards and recognizes, or recognition throughout its history, and is committed to providing quality health care while making a difference in patient and family lives. Whereas, above all else, Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski is committed to the care of improvement of human life with a vision to the, to be recognized as the health care provider and employer of choice in the New River Valley. And whereas, since nineteen seventy-three, Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski has significantly invested to keep their facility on the leading edge of technology and providing the best possible patient experience, continually working to serve the community by delivering top-quality, cost-effective health care throughout the region. And whereas, for fifty years, Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski has partnered with the community organizations to promote health and wellness, and the hospital staff, physicians, and volunteers providing onsite health education, free health screenings, counseling, event speaker, blood drives, and more. Now, therefore, the town council of the town of Pulaski do hereby congratulate Lewis Gale Hospital Pulaski on fifty years of delivering comprehensive health care to residents of the town of Pulaski, Pulaski County, and the New River Valley. If I can have a roll call for this, please.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we'll deliver this tomorrow at their fiftieth celebration at the hospital. All right, next is our presentations. Proposed update to the Sixth Street and Washington Avenue lot, Mr. Nate Repass, please.
Right, so Nate Repass, Outdoor Facilities Coordinator for the town, and I'll be presenting a concept idea for the fourth corner of the Sixth Street Park. So that's Washington and Sixth Street, as you can see on the screen here. Currently, on the other three corners, we have playground equipment that we recently replaced, swing sets as well on one corner. We have newly renovated pickleball courts on another corner. We have two currently with plans to expand to another two in the future. And on the third corner, we've recently begun renovating the basketball court that was there. It was a small twenty-by-twenty-seven half of a half-court with an old goal that was aging, so we've replaced that with a forty-seven-by-fifty regulation half-court, and we'll be installing a goal up there to match the new goals on our first street property. So with all of those improvements on the other three corners, this corner is looking a little bit underwhelming at the moment. Currently, there's one set of stairs, three trees on the property, some scrub and brush, and some grass. It's currently used by the neighborhood as kind of a neighborhood backyard area, green space in that park area. So, moving forward, we would like to keep it a green space, and so part of the concept we're looking at is turning this into an art park. So currently, in the town, we've had several projects over the past year that have included art in our parks, including the Waiting on a Train of Thought piece that is currently at the depot on loan from Charlie Brower as part of his, Everywhere Out There, I believe, which is forty-some art pieces of his across the New River Valley. We had the ladder sculpture in Jackson Park, and actually, if you go to Jackson Park, the first Google review mentions that they love all the events and the art displays in the park. We had also had requests over the last year from the Fine Arts Center that some artists were wondering if they could put pieces on loan in our various parks. They had suggested the Pocket Park and some other locations, but we don't currently have a process or really great locations for that, so we'd like to use this space as an option for that. To complement the other three areas, we would renovate green space around there and provide several places that art could be placed in the park, while providing open green space in the middle for meditation, group fitness classes, yoga, tai chi, folks to come out and picnic in the middle of the park, people to come out and play bocce ball or other yard games, and still keep the character of the park as kind of a calming green space that has native plants, native trees, and some art around the park. We would also add several benches, and so this is the current layout of the park. It is up on a hill, so we have steps, some overgrown trees, and three large trees and a small tree that are currently on the park. As a possibility for a renovation, we would include additional gardens. We do need an arborist to come in and consult on the trees. Several have been dropping limbs. It's my understanding that one of them has an owl's nest currently as well, so we really need to evaluate those to see what needs to stay, and then potentially add some native trees, native shrubs, and other plants there. Our goal would be to have several benches, backless preferred, so that folks could sit and look out at the pickleball, out at people playing basketball, or look inward on the park and kind of reflect on things that are there. For artwork options, we've kind of based this idea on the Center for Fine Arts in Floyd. They have several three-to-four-foot concrete pads, about four inches thick, and they have rotating displays in their garden. With that setup, you could have fairly large pieces that could be set on a concrete pad, anchored in place, and rotated through the park. I know currently Charlie Sculpture at the depot is on about a six-month loan, so with our process, we would look to have pieces that may rotate along with possibly an anchor piece in the park that would be a permanent fixture of art, whether that's a functional bench, something like a concrete chess table, or something else that's both functional and an artistic piece to kind of keep everything together in the park, we're not sure quite yet, as this is still a concept. But we're hoping that that kind of concrete pads with rotating art would be a fairly inexpensive way to bring art to the parks. With that, we'll also need to set up an application and approval process for art pieces so that folks can apply and kind of get an idea of, you know, so that we have a queue of art pieces to go there so that we know what's going on. So that's the idea for the park, that it would be an art and meditation space. So overall, we're going from currently just open grass, a couple of trees, not much use there, to something that incorporates native plants, native trees, some artwork in the park, to keep it as a green space there, but as a relaxing green space to complement the other areas of a playground, pickleball courts and basketball courts. So hopefully, does anybody have thoughts on that design, any feedback?
Are the intentions for the, if you're, I guess, looking at this picture here, for the right-hand side of that property to be fenced all the way down?
Yes. So our goal would be to have a low fence on the Sixth Street side of that property due to the steepness of that hill. The hill along Washington is much less steep, although we do have in the designs here a cutout access for mowers, so currently mowing that lot, apparently that hill is a pain to get up in a lawnmower, so we would regrade part of that to allow easier access. But then we would fence off that to kind of delineate it from the yard next door, because as just kind of open green space, we do want to differentiate that, so it doesn't just feel like someone's backyard, but really feels like a separate park.
Would that grading also allow for just a little, I mean, those steps are not super accessible, not just, you know, not just ADA-wise, but just generally? Would that regrading for the mower access provide a better access for?
Quite possibly, and that is something so in looking at accessibility for the park there, the stairs don't currently have a handrail, which is something we would certainly need to add. I believe in just some basic looking at the property, in order to have something that fully meets ADA requirements, we would need to cut a ramp from the extreme far corner of the property down to the low end in order to maintain that grade. So we may have something that is close to meeting those by making a trail there in that graded access, and that's something that we can consider as we get further in the design process. This is kind of an initial pitch, and these are, this is a bad Photoshop done by myself to kind of show what it might look like. Of course, the plantings will need to consult and find native plants that look good in that position and will also grow appropriate for the property. So the three trees that are on there now are very tall trees, and there are power lines, there are houses nearby, so when they drop limbs, it's not really ideal. So our goal is to bring in potentially shorter trees, dogwoods, that sort of thing, so that we can have a better use of that with the plants on site.
So in terms of, excuse me, next steps, if the council likes this kind of an approach, then Nate and other staff people would get together, find out what materials and what costs would actually be involved in making this happen. But if you'll recall, sometime back, we had a lot of interest in this parcel, a lot of different ideas, and I think with the activity that we do have available in the other three corners, the thought that this might be a more passive, meditative kind of location, and the positioning of the benches that you see on that particular slide allows people to look inward as well as outward. So you could sit on one bench and actually look out at the pickleball court, or you could have an internal view, and the same thing with the bench that is positioned so that you could look at folks playing basketball, or you could turn on the other direction. And I think you said you were recommending backless?
Yes.
Benches so that they'd have that flexibility.
And some of this may also be functional art as well, so as we look further into the design, we would consult with the Fine Arts Center, potentially with Instill Mindfulness that does meditation stuff around town to find things that would fit with the environment. So some of the benches may be integrated into some of the garden areas, some of the art may be integrated into the garden area so that you have a large garden with an art piece that stands out from the low-growing plants around that. So these are just fairly general concepts now.
Well, I guess the only two thoughts I have is the, the garden areas concern me just because of a maintenance standpoint of, and depending on what, what we're saying when we say garden area, if, you know, let's think about the, the plantings and stuff that are, you know, that are done by the park at the train station, you know, how much complaints and stuff there are about it getting overgrown and needing to be fended out and trimmed up, you know, and taken down. Depending on what we're talking about from a garden area, that could be creating a lot of space that requires maintenance to keep looking good, and who, or is the town going to, you know, is there another group or another organization that's going to maintain those garden areas, or will that become a potentially extensive job if that large of a space, I would think, to maintain the look of it, or is it more of a hardscaped kind of garden area?
Again, we're, we're kind of open on that idea. I have kind of started some initial conversations, and Friends of Pete Creek has expressed interest in continuing some of their gardening programs where they have a pollinator garden and a monarch butterfly garden in two of our other parks. They had expressed interest in potentially designing one of these gardens to use native plants and either have it as another pollinator garden or something for songbirds, to kind of have purpose to that, so they would come in. And then talking to the gardening club that did the beautiful plantings down at the train station planters, they had mentioned some potential interest as well in taking care of that. Some other options for that area, with a large garden space in the back, we could potentially also do an adopt-a-garden area, since we no longer have a community garden, if folks wanted to take over a small space in memory, in honor, and sponsor it in some way, or potentially even businesses that wanted to sponsor. So we do have some options, and that's the, again, the design is not fixed, and so we could look into whether that should be something more hardscaped with a small number of perennial plants that are lower maintenance, or whether we want something that looks more lush and full in the garden area.
Now, only other thought I had is if we were in the process of this, going to be installing benches that potentially actually on the pickleball court side, thinking about, I understand we're talking about this particular corner, but at the same moment, it's always seemed like that the pickleball courts themselves need that section, need some type of seating or picnic tables or something that could allow people to, if they weren't actually on the courts and they were waiting for the courts or were spectating the courts, that we could accomplish that at the same time.
Yes, and hopefully, I have several benches that are slated for the pickleball court area. It just hasn't ended up being the right weather to get them concreted in place lately. Public Works has been pretty busy with Christmas decorations of late, so we do have some benches options there and some other ideas. Awesome.
The only thing I might suggest considering is, I know we've got trees there, but I do think that, well, two things. One, I'm going to get questions about why aren't we putting bathrooms in? So, I mean, I know that's a much bigger ask than what the current plan is, but I do think that there is going to be questions about maybe some shaded space, whether it's a gazebo or a, you know, a covered area or something like that. It might be worth considering whether or not that fits in anywhere. But, I mean, it could even be, you know, like a pergola or something that could be part of like a more natural.
And we've talked, some folks in the neighborhood had expressed concern about putting anything covered, and folks, the type of people that it might attract to that sort of park, they liked the idea of something that was much more backyard. It's my understanding that that park is heavily used by folks in the neighborhood who come from their house, walk down the street, go to the park, and then go home, so some of that kind of lack of amenities. The parking here is also not great, so I don't think that this is drawing as many folks from other places as it is drawing from that community, or folks that come and park and do one thing and maybe stop somewhere else for a moment and go. So it's not as much of a draw from the other areas of town as it is from that area, but those are certainly options for, for that site. Or something that we could add to one of the other corners, whether that's shaded viewing area for the basketball courts, water fountains there at a later date, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Pulaski Area Transit, Monica Music, welcome again.
Thank you all. Hope everyone's fine this evening. So I'm just going to kind of recap, like last time when I was here, we were getting ready to have our kickoff meeting with DRPT staff concerning our transit development plan and our microstudy plan. And so it was determined at that meeting that that study would take ten to twelve months, therefore, that's not going to allow us to apply for additional or a different kind of grant during this twenty twenty-five grant cycle, which is open now, and the grants are due in, on February the first. Then, there was some discussion, and Darlene was in on that meeting, and we talked about whether we should look at some different options, maybe with smaller vehicles. However, at a meeting I was at today, they said those smaller vehicles, there's a two-and-a-half-year, two-and-a-half-year wait on those kind of smaller vehicles. So after that last meeting, I talked with Patrice at DRPT, and her, she suggested that for this twenty twenty-five grant cycle, that we don't request for any replacement vehicles, that we get the study over with and see what the consultants feel is what is best, whether it would be, she talked about whether it be microtransit or a different transportation option. But the consultants will work with us and tell us what they feel is best, and then this time next year, then we would be able to apply for whatever they feel is the best in that twenty twenty-six grant cycle. Unfortunately, they've had a lot of staff changes at DRPT, and they did apologize that our study got done later than what we wanted. But again, they're fronting all the money and this consultant, so we just have to work with them and, and do the best that we can do in that, unfortunately. So with that being said, for our twenty twenty-five grants, she did also suggest that we put in a capital assistance for some spare, spare parts, because having, not getting new vehicles, then we will have more maintenance on vehicles. So she did say that we could put in a grant for spare parts, so we're thinking twenty thousand, we would put in a grant for spare parts that we could have on hand. That way, that would be covered in grant money with only, usually a five percent match. But then again, until grants are awarded, we wouldn't know for sure what that is. We'd also asked to put in a capital assistance grant for two replacement computers that will have met their life-ful span, and those would be sixteen hundred each, which would be thirty-two hundred, again with a five percent match. And then, for the operating part, you all should have received the operating budget that we have put together for twenty twenty-five, and there is an increase in that, partly due to wages or minimum wage is supposed to be going up, so we had to go ahead and factor that in, anticipating that that will go through with. So in that twenty twenty-five budget, we projected that would be eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand and twelve dollars, and the local match from the town of Pulaski would be eighty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. And again, this would need vote on, to be voted on before that grant is due on February the first of twenty twenty-four. And again, I would just like to say that I see public transportation like an infrastructure that the essential service is there, anytime someone may need to use it, whether it's being used every minute of every service hour, just like a road's there in case someone needs a road. DRPT and the state continues to do everything they can to help rural transit agencies, and we appreciate all the ongoing support that we see, receive, not only from DRPT, but from you all, the town of Pulaski and Pulaski County. Tonight, Jennifer really didn't have a lot of budget stuff to go over, since we're mostly working on just getting ready to do our grant proposals to DRPT, but we're welcome to answer any questions about the budget or anything you may have.
So, question about that two-and-a-half-year time, is that because the, sorry, is that because the, the vehicle, the smaller vehicles still need to be ADA accessible, so we need to be one of those specialized vans that has wheelchair access?
Right, and I think the, so I've been at DRPT training for two days, so today they just talked about the vendor that they're currently using, it's just it's taking them that long to get parts and get vehicles built.
Because they're taking, like, off the lot, and then they're converting them into a, okay, and those smaller vehicles, how, do we know how many seats they have, like what?
They have nine passengers, and then, so the, those ones that are the raised roofs, and then the next smallest would be a minivan, which can hold three passengers in the back plus a wheelchair.
Okay. So, and that, that raised roof, that's the, like, ones that the, the senior services, the ones that you see over by the county building? So those are those sort of Sprinter-type vans?
Just a little bit, just really just a little bit smaller than the VOCs, really, because they can hold, the VOCs will hold twelve to fifteen passengers.
All your vans, all the vans you guys are utilizing now ADA?
Yes.
Every, so everyone, so pick up on what Councilmember said, if you went to a smaller van, three, the, I guess Plymouth, what do you call it, the other, yeah, the minivan, is, is it, can it be ADA?
It is, because it, so it doesn't have the electric lift, but it has, like, on the side, it has a ramp that you pull out, and you, and you push the?
But it just cut down on passengers?
Yes.
And they have to be heavily modified to do that?
Yeah, because usually the floors are lowered in those.
Right.
So it's not a big incline to get up in there.
But Monica, if we went to a demand response, and I realize the jury is still out on that, the demand response could target and not have to have all the vehicles with that handicapped accessibility, because in the demand response, people would indicate whether or not they needed that special accommodation, so not every vehicle would have to be equipped that way. Is that correct?
I think, but if I'm thinking what I saw today on the contracts that DRPT has, all their vehicles are wheelchair accessible.
Yes, since it's, since it's federal funds?
Yeah.
The ADA would likely mandate that everything be accessible.
Right, even the, even the minivans are.
Even if they were never, even if no one on a wheelchair ever used them in their entire useful lifespan, they need to be ADA accessible.
That, that was the question I was getting to, because even if you go to a small, it still has to be ADA by standards, yeah.
I have a question about the additional money that you are suggesting, or that DRPT suggested that you add to your budget for parts. I think everyone in the room knows that the town actually services your vehicles, and as well as provides you gas at cost, for which you all provide reimbursement. Would those, that money for parts be used when the town shop needed to have additional parts, or is this an inventory that you all would create at your location and somehow use differently?
So what, so what we're doing, so Ron just came back to work, and I've been out on vacation, so I haven't got to, the other person that was filling in for Ron while he was out asked that we wait and talk to Ron when he came back, so we were going to try to get with Ron to see what kind of parts that he suggested. So I'll be back in the office tomorrow, so I'll plan on getting with Ron tomorrow, but for the most part, it would just be parts that we would have on hand that, that would be used up there.
The town would purchase and then use when needed in your vehicles?
Yes.
So just, just a real quick clarification, on the study, that's what you had said would take ten to twelve months to complete, correct?
Correct.
And within that study, we hope to get an idea of what the, the most optimum way to operate the transit is?
Yes.
Okay.
And unfortunately, we were hoping to be there right tonight, you know, we were hoping to have that in place, but they're just now in the process now of getting a consultant, and it's already been a couple weeks, so I think from our last email, that we should be getting of what consultant was picked pretty soon.
Okay, so they're, they're still in the early selection process, so that's, that's, that would be early, that would be twenty twenty-five? that would be early, that would be 2025 early at best, is that, is that-
Right. So we, so they only do grants once a year. So we know it would be 20, the grant cycle 2026 before we could apply for that. Now, not saying that we couldn't make any changes prior to that, because as when we were on the call, Darling asked, if, if we got through that process quicker than the 10 to 12 months, was, could we make some modifications? And they said they were not opposed to us making some changes, but maybe not 100% switching over, if that's what it was. So I think they're willing to work with us, but until the study's complete, we wouldn't really know.
And, and the reason we have to wait till the study's done, since DRPT provides 90% of the funding for transit, that's what they mandate. They say, if we want to spend this money, we have to, we have to spend it in this way. And if we want to change it, we have to go and do, basically prove that it makes more sense to do something different. And they were the ones who said we should switch-
Right.
-to our current model from the previous one. And then they, so now we have to basically prove to them that we want to do something different. And they won't let us spend, apparently, we could spend some of that money on a, on a different system, but we have to basically show them that that's the way it's gonna be.
Right. And then with this study, DRPT's paying 100%.
Right, yes. So that's why they get to tell us who we use and how we do it and all that, when it happens.
Thank you.
I, I would just suggest that it sounds like if, you know, from a town standpoint, that our folks that are working on the vehicles and doing the repairs to them currently, if you guys are trying to put together a list of, you know, how that would be best served, that maybe town staff side may be able to benefit, you know, what parts, you know, or would be most appropriate if, because it sound like, do you have to tell them ahead of time what parts you think you're gonna need, or is it just a dollar amount?
I think it would just be something that I would get Ron to tell us what we use the most of, and then we just kind of come up with that money amount.
It's just that you're just trying to find a dollar amount.
Yeah.
You don't have to provide them with like a, we want to buy so many transmissions or so many, we just think, we did this math, and this is what we spend money on when we have to do work on the vehicles?
Have to have some idea.
Some support, yeah.
Okay, so it's just a budget, basically. Okay. But that is, this is in lieu of a, oh, we're gonna buy a new van or vehicle, we're gonna do, we want a budget for the things that we spend money on replacing in the vehicles.
Right.
And that's what she's talking about, Ron, at the town shop, to assist her with coming up with that.
Okay.
Because he just got back to work from being out on sick leave.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Monica. Thank you.
So there'll have to be council vote on this. So do you all want me to come back in January, or?
Probably the second meeting. I think we're likely to cancel the first meeting in the-
Yeah, that'll, yeah, that is January 16th, yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing, so Resolution 2023-56, appropriation of funds. If I could have the staff report, please, Ms. Bertram.
I believe the council is familiar with a couple of projects that we have been working on that will require an appropriation from the town's fund balance in the amount of $1,450,000. And that amount of money requires that a public hearing be scheduled with subsequent approval by the town council. Be happy to answer any questions that you all have about that particular transfer. I think the council is aware that through some good budgeting and stewardship by all of your employees over the last several years, we've been able to establish a very nice fund balance that exceeds percentage-wise what the auditors recommend. And so removing this amount and putting it towards some planned expenditures related to economic development activities will hopefully provide additional revenue in the future to the town's general fund. But certainly, this appropriation in no way hinders our ability to maintain a healthy fund balance should there be an emergency in the future.
Does council have any questions? Okay. If not, I will open the public hearing. And as I, as if I, as I have no one rushing the podium, I will close the public hearing. And then if, does council have any other questions before we approve or? All right. If someone would like to make a motion, please?
Mayor, make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023-57, appropriating funds as written.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, I think.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. Second.
All right. May I have a roll call, please?
No.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Okay. So next, we have Resolution 2023-57, reappointing Lane Penn to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Water, Waste Water Treatment Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think it deserves as far as any explanation. This is a continuation of Mr. Penn's longstanding service on the Pepper's Ferry, Pepper's Ferry Authority.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-57, appointing Mr. Lane Penn to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Water Treatment Authority.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Next is Resolution 2023-58, reappointing James, James Ratcliff as an alternate to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Waste Water Treatment Authority. As said before, there's nothing-
I think you are aware of the fact that Mr. Ratcliff has served in this alternate position previously, and he is willing to continue serving.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2023-58 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Abstain.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Resolution 2023-59, appointing Brooks Dawson to the Pulaski Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Again, Mr. Dawson, you had a member of the board whose term was expiring with the first of the calendar year, and Mr. Dawson very generously agreed to move into that slot.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2023-59, appointing Brooks Dawson to the Pulaski Redevelopment and Housing Authority.
Second.
And may I have a roll, roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Abstain.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Now, we have Ordinance 2023-18, amending Chapter 46 to the town of Pulaski's Code of Ordinances. Ms. Bertram?
Council, I believe you all will recall that a couple of meetings ago, you had a very lengthy document, which was to replace Chapter 46 of the code as required by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. When that was reviewed, after your approval, there were some minor sections that needed to be amended, and you have attached to the ordinance, the redlining of those few items that were to be reviewed, we removed, and none of them had any impact on the basic elements of the ordinance itself. I would recommend their approval.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved that we approve Ordinance 2023-18.
As written.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Next is the approval of the contract for our new town manager. Oh, I just, I marked off the wrong one. Sorry about that. Ordinance 2023-19, granting right-of-way and easement to America Electric, American Electric Power Company for town-owned property par, tax parcel number 073-001-0000-060A.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, there is a ongoing project, as the council is familiar with, at the Hardy company. This is on property that James Hardy recently allowed the town to receive in order to build a pump station on it, and AEP requires an easement in order to provide power to that particular tank. They have previously had right-of-way and easements provided at James Hardy and attached to the ordinance of the copy of the actual line and the required easement request from AEP.
We don't even have a public hearing on this? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance 2023-19 as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one?
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
All right. Let's try this again. Next is the con, our, our next one would be on the contract for the new town manager. Do we need to, I don't have.
I think we need to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the new town, the employment contract with the new town manager. Is that fair?
Yes.
Uh.
How are you gonna say that?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
All right. At this time, I would like to announce our new town manager that will be taking the helm on February 1st, Mr. D. Todd Day. He is in, in attendance tonight, and I'd like to be the first to welcome you to the town of Pulaski. I believe that you will step up and follow in the footsteps of someone that got us on track again, and I know that we will continue to move forward, looking forward at what's brighter days. I know they always are. If you would like to come up, if you, I mean, if you don't want to, you don't have to, but you're more than welcome to come up and say hello. That's fine.
If you just don't mind coming to the microphones of folks, we actually do have folks at home who listen, so they will appreciate hearing your voice.
We slotted you for two, but no, I'm just kidding.
First of all, I want to say thank you for the unanimous vote of confidence, and I am looking forward. I've had the opportunity to meet a few of the members of staff, and I'm really impressed. And I know I've got a big pair of shoes to walk behind with, with Bertram, and I promise I'll do what I can, and my work ethic, I think you'll find is above board. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I look forward to becoming a positive part of the team you've created. So thank you very much.
Thank you. What size shoe do you wear, Ms. Bertram?
It depends on what the shoe looks like. One always has three sizes.
All right. Next, we have Resolution 2023-60, resolution appointing candidates to the New River Valley Agency on Aging Board of Directors. Do I need to say who they are? Okay. Well, we'll just let it go. If someone would like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, adopt Resolution 2023-60 as written. Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Next is the public comment period. I have no public comment slips, so we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Today, we have considerate, for your consideration, November 16th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes, and November 21st, 2023 Town Council Minute, Meeting Minutes.
We'll have to do them separately.
You can.
I think you can do them together.
Was everyone here?
I wasn't here on the 16th.
So let's do them.
Oh.
Okay, so let's do the November 16th, 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt, or we approve Town Council Meeting Minutes, November 16, 2023.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. East?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Abstain.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Clontz?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
Okay, now, November 21st, 2023, Town Council Meetings, Minute, Minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Town Council Meeting Minutes, November 21st, 2023. Second.
And a roll call for that, please?
Hi.
Mr. Clark?
Hi.
Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. Ratliff?
Hi.
Mr. Reese?
Hi.
I will move to the council comments. Mr. East?
Only one comment, the, the lights and the decorations look amazing. Thank you, Ms. Bertram and your staff.
That was gonna be mine, so.
I know, Mr. Clark, it's-
Second that.
Mr. Dawson?
Ditto on the lights. Welcome again, Mr. Day. It's great to see you here. That's all I have.
Mr. Ratcliff?
You know, I've got a few things.
Nothing.
Real quick for Ms. Bertram, the parking lot over here next to the county administration building on the corner over there, that's ours, right? Front, beside the-
Jefferson and Main.
Beside the dumpster, somebody's dumped some mattresses or something right in there, and it's been there for a good while. I, I don't know, it's not nothing GFL's done, they've just thrown it. We need to get that maybe picked up, because that's, we get a lot of leg traffic through business and scripts, just get it up. That's, and then I know, and it may already be up, I don't know that it's not. It hasn't been there for a day or two. The sign, the new sign, looks great. The new sign looks great. Yeah, see, now think other than that, welcome, Mr. Day. Hit the ground running, we gonna hit the ground running with you too. Ms. Bertram is, she's, she's been just one hell of a good manager. And I know you're gonna step right on our go-to, so welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clontz?
Abstain.
And Mr. Reese?
I was also gonna say something about how not just the lights and decorations look, but how nice it looks downtown, specifically on Main, West Main Street. I know that's been a sore spot for a lot of folks. And I just hope that everybody will look at that, how nice it looks, how much nicer it's gonna look, and think that if we, you know, are a little patient, maybe, that we're gonna see a whole lot more places in town look a whole lot better. I did have a question. I know I've brought this up before, but that water break on Washington and May, and Sixth Street is leaking down, and on one day, was it last, when it, was it real cold, it iced up on Fifth, where Fifth and Washington, and sort of covered a good chunk of the road. And I know we've got lots, and I know Public Works, you know, we, we put 50 things on their to-do list, but it seems like that's gone from just being kind of annoying to potentially a, a safety hazard. That's just a busy intersection there. If it gets iced over, that's just, if we could just look at that, or at least salt it while, while we're working on it, if that's too big of a job to do, when those days where it's gonna be real, real bad. And also, welcome to Mr. Day. Looking, really looking forward to seeing what you're gonna do here. I know you, you talked a lot about loving to build things, and I'm really looking forward to all the things you're gonna build in, in the next several years here. So, welcome.
Yeah, ditto, 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 everything, pretty much. That's the bad thing with being last, is everybody grabs all the good stuff. It's like candy barrel here. But there's also a small leak, and I don't know, they probably know about on, right on Fourth, near Jefferson, that's on, right? Main Street would be Third, so Fourth, yeah. Fourth and Jefferson, close to it. It's, I've just noticed it get, staying wet right there. Also, remind everyone that the parade is coming up this Thursday. I hope to see everyone out there with bells and whistles and all that kind of garb. Also, welcome, Mr. Day. You'll do a great job. Someone has left you a very good place to start. And she doesn't like to be bragged on, but it's, it's been a, a lot, and we're, we're moving in the right direction, as I said. We'll keep looking forward, brighter days, we've got them coming. With that, the manager's report, Ms. Bertram?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have, uh, several things, uh, to report, some of which I'll just build on some of your own, uh, comments that you all have made. First of all, we have two new businesses that will be opening on West Main, um, in late January, early February. Uh, one is called Mana Tattoo Parlor, and they are working frantically in there, drove by last night, the lights were on, and they were busy doing wallpapering and other kinds of things. They have been given a temporary CO, so I believe they are doing some actual tattooing right now within the building, and, uh, we've gotten a lot of rave reviews about, uh, the individuals that will be in that, uh, parlor. And I think it's gonna bring some new and increased traffic, uh, to our downtowns, so it's gonna be important that we have other activities and venues for people, um, as they visit us. Uh, we're also gonna have opening, uh, in February across the street, we have one on each side of West Main, Broussard's General Store, uh, which will be a small convenience store, uh, what I call the, uh, store that you can carry two bags, so that you don't have to get in your car, uh, to go shopping. Um, and we're looking forward to having, uh, that, um, in our downtown. Uh, I'm pleased that, uh, we have gotten such a positive response for the replacement of the sign at the Y. It is the same sign, uh, we put it in storage because we knew eventually we would want to return it, uh, to that location once we did all of the street, uh, reworking that was necessary, but we did get it painted. So, it's freshly painted, and we've gotten a lot of compliments, not only about the sign, but how well it goes with the building that was recently painted, uh, behind it. So, I think, uh, in spite of some of the negativity, uh, negative comments that we sometimes have, people are having a hard time finding something wrong with that particular, uh, placement. We are in the process of refurbishing all of our, what I call, welcome signs, uh, at all of the key entrances, uh, to the town. One has already been, uh, placed on, um, uh, the, the mountain coming in, the one on Route ninety-nine has been removed and should be back in place, uh, in the next week or so. And then we have, uh, two more, one on Route eleven and one on, I think it's called Route six hundred, I call it Bob White Boulevard, but it changes names, uh, when you get into the county. But all of that is intended to give people a better feeling for the town as they come in, not only the first time, but as repeaters. I have signed the contract for the third ARS home, the acquired rehabilitate cell. We've built and had two sold now. This one will be built at five twenty Jackson Street, and we're using another developer, um, than we've used previously to have an opportunity to see what other kinds of housing can be constructed for a reasonable price in the downtown. But the first two brought new people, uh, to live in our town, and we're hoping that this third will do the same. We're increasing the population one or two people at a time, but it's still moving in the right direction, as the mayor says. Uh, mayor did mention the parade on Thursday. Santa, uh, is reappearing, he was not in the parade last year, but he's gonna be at the end of the parade, as is the tradition. He didn't feel like he was doing enough, so he's been sitting across the street, both yesterday and this evening, uh, having his picture taken, uh, with young and old. I understand from Nate that one individual came with six dogs last night to have pictures taken. And one of you, if you wanna raise your hand, was kind enough to suggest that maybe hot chocolate ought to be served. We looked at first for a sponsor, uh, to do that, and mentioned it to the J.C.'s, and they decided last week to volunteer, so they are providing free hot chocolate. And are very pleased, uh, that that suggestion was made, and they hope to continue, uh, something like that in the future. I learned something interesting about the J.C.'s today, uh, they celebrated their seventy-fifth anniversary last year. But we have the oldest J.C.'s organization in the state of Virginia. Where's, ours was the very first, and I have not heard that factoid, as I call it, um, in the past. So, we have a lot, uh, to be, uh, proud of, uh, and they have been very appreciative of, uh, the efforts of the staff, both in the lighting and Nate, and helping them get organized so they could have a very successful Santa picture-taking. And if you get out of here in the next four minutes, you might be able to get your picture taken with Santa, although I'm not sure that's gonna happen. I myself have asked, I'm sure you've had others ask, about Route eleven and the fact that there is no stripe currently, where they recently repaved, uh, Clatterbuck, which is our contractor that comes in and does the striping, is still in town, and that will be done, uh, hopefully before the end of this week. They've been kind to have, play a catch-up, but they've also had some equipment issues that have delayed them, but all of that should be ready. And one that I found particularly interesting as I traveled the town was Commerce Street. There was a section of Commerce Street, um, on both sides of Jefferson that was never striped. And when I asked about it last year, they said, well, that's the way we've always done it. And I said, well, I think the stripe ought to go all the way through, so, if you, uh, see the stripe there, you know, I caused that to happen, if it's good, bad, or indifferent, uh, but it just seemed to me that it was kind of strange that there was a section that had no striping on it. The other thing, and this is kind of a technical issue, but I think it's important to share it with you all, um, and with the public, because of the drought decoration that we had, that was then lifted when we got, um, some additional, uh, rainfall. But our staff has taken very seriously, uh, the issue, uh, of water, um, at Gatewood and the dam, and we've, in the process, learned an awful lot about the water levels, and I have some very interesting data that my friend over here who's manning the Facebook page, I'll put together, but I wanna share with you. The current level, um, at, uh, Gatewood is nine point zero six feet below full capacity, uh, which means that there's seven hundred and thirty-five million gallons. Uh, our average flow out of Gatewood in any one day is three hundred, three and a half million gallons. So, we can produce water until we reach thirty-four feet below full capacity. This means that we currently have six hundred and thirty-nine million gallons of useful water left at Gatewood. So, if it never rained, that water would last us a hundred and eighty days. We will obviously, uh, start having, I, I regret it, but I have to say, snow and rain, starting with this time of the year. And obviously, when that happens, the levels will rise. What is happening, uh, is a normal occurrence that has happened in previous years, just, uh, last year, we were seven point nine, uh, below full capacity, and we were at nine, uh, as I said earlier. So, once we get snow, and the level, uh, should rise to full capacity by the end of December. But for those of you who are concerned, uh, we do have, uh, digital, uh, readers that can tell us exactly what's happening, um, at, uh, the dam in terms of the water level, and we do go out once a week and visibly view what is happening as well. And in looking at the drought situation, we also went back and looked at the provisions of the, uh, sale of Hogan's Dam, which occurred probably ten, twelve years ago. Um, and that, uh, purchase allows us, uh, to actually open a valve, uh, at Hogan's Dam if it became necessary in order to get additional water. So, just want everybody to be assured, uh, that while we monitor all that, we are in very good shape as it relates to water level and our ability to produce water for ourselves and for some, uh, county residents. Uh, we have one last, uh, special event that sounds to me to be very exciting, um, and that's gonna occur on the seventeenth of December. And we're having a tea party reenactment. That is being sponsored, uh, by, um, the, I guess you call it the sister museum, to the Radcliff Museum, the wilderness one. And they are going to do a reenactment and actually throw tea that has been approved by the Peak Creek Friends, uh, into, uh, the creek. And that's gonna occur, uh, between three and four P.M. on the seventeenth of December. So, uh, after you've rested from the parade, please come back and see the reenactment of the tea party. And that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is my report for the.
I got one thing. I forgot to tell you that we actually took up some money to give you a gift card to get you an ankle tattoo. And the card will never expire. It ain't gonna expire, you, you, whatever you wanna put on it, you put on it.
You'd be surprised if I actually did that and I demanded that you.
If you do it, I'll pay for it.
I'm, I'm writing that down.
One last, uh, note, and that is, um, your first meeting in January is scheduled for January the second. I believe we had a similar situation, uh, last year because of the holiday.
Yep.
Uh, the council decided to cancel that meeting, and it is my recommendation that you do so this year. I believe with the holidays and the number of people, uh, that are going to be taking time off, and the fact that I'm gonna overload your December the nineteenth agenda, uh, that you'll need that, uh, rest on the second. I would recommend that you cancel that meeting so that we can schedule, as we just did with, uh, the transit company, any presentations to occur on the sixteenth.
Sounds like we need to cancel the nineteenth.
This one's wanting to cancel nineteenth also.
Do we need a motion to do that, or?
If someone would do, make a motion.
Uh, move to cancel the January second, twenty twenty-four council meeting.
Second.
And all in favor, oh, no, no, I'm sorry, could I get a roll call for that, they'll all scream.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Ratliff?
Aye.
Mr. Clontz? Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Alright, uh, just as a reminder, our future council meetings, um, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three will be our last one for twenty twenty-three, our closed session will start at five thirty, open session will start at seven. And as I have nothing else on the agenda, I declare this meeting adjourned.